Okay, good evening. We're going to call the meeting to order. The Southwick Town and Granville Regional School Committee. It is six eleven. I apologize for being a few minutes late. We are a little bit of a technical issue. For those that wish to make a public comment this evening, please send your public comment to the superintendent. At STGRSD dot O R G email address. We'll make sure it is read at one of the two of the comments as long as it meets the appropriate criteria. So in your packets, you should have a secretary's report dated eleven two. We'll entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes.
So moved. A second.
Any questions or comments on the secretary's report? Okay, we will do a roll call vote to accept those meeting minutes. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero. Please continue to monitor your school email addresses for warrant articles for approval. Assign them and return them back to the district office. Any correspondence this evening?
I have no official correspondence tonight.
All right, let's move on to our first public comment and we'll ask Amy to check the superintendent email address.
Okay, Chairman Hul, I have two um public comment emails. The first one is from Brenna Comey, Southwick, Mass. She says Superintendent Willard and School Committee, our district is following D E C guidelines to the extreme and then some. Our governor has gone on record stating schools are not spreaders. And yet our children are still sitting at home falling further and further behind academically. While you take weeks to deem what is safe and what is not, who is truly paying the price in all of this? Our children, that's who. You are failing them. These children are missing out on so much more than just being surrounded by warm bodies. They are missing social interaction, academic help from an educator when they need it. Encouraging words from their classmates, a daily routine outside of the house they can grow and learn from. Have you thought about the impact on families, bringing them to their breaking points, asking them to give up working hours to stay with their young children? Sitting by as they become more and more frustrated in front of a computer screen unable to provide the help their child is looking for because of the technology issues. Families relying on friends and loved ones to alter their schedules to zip by why their child loses more and more interest in school. Parents struggling to find a way to get lunch pickup because they have multiple children. All with different lunchtimes but are too young to be left home alone. How would you like them to choose? Their child is missing out on academic learning time or missing out on lunch. All of this is happening over a number in a contract. As a tax paying resident of this town for fifteen years, I am sad to see how my money is being spent. It is time to do better, do right by our children and get them back in school where they belong. The next public comment is from Robert Stevenson, Southwick, Massachusetts. Good evening Superintendent and School Board members. I'm writing this evening concerning two subjects. First, I once again am requesting that the School Board create a subcommittee for sports. This would allow a larger group of people to be able to obtain and coordinate studies and the latest medical information concerning infection rates among student athletes. I appreciate that this topic was finally raised at the last meeting, but to delay the creation of this subcommittee preemptively is short sighted. I was relieved to hear that at least one committee member was trying to act preemptively. I was hoping that based on experience, that everyone went through this fall that you would want to finally get in front of some of these decisions. There is absolutely no reason why the committee could not be created before the M I A A issues their recommendations. This would allow you to be able to address this issue immediately instead of having to wait to form the committee after the recommendation has been issued. Contrary to the thoughts of some committee members, you are running out of time. The first of the year will arrive before you know it. This cannot be left to the last minute again. The second issue I would like to address is the failure of this committee to be able to renegotiate the M O U with the teachers' union in a timely manner. This failure has led to the avoidable situation that we are dealing with. That places all of our children in a remote learning environment that started on November ninth. And from the last email from the superintendent is going to last at least until November thirtieth. You negotiated a trigger with the union using the infection rate of the county. Sign the M O U on nine two twenty. And conveniently, no one informed the parents of the children what you had negotiated. To have the ability of our children to have in-school learning dependent on the infection rate for Hamden County. What we comprise two point five percent of that population is ridiculous. Give parents one business day to completely rearrange their schedules due to your lack of planning is unacceptable. Then to only start renegotiating that agreement a couple of weeks ago is a complete failure of your obligations to these communities. The situation that we are in was completely avoidable. The committee is responsible for the union negotiations and you owe the parents of all the children, especially the elementary school age children. An apology and an explanation as to why you delayed these renegotiations with the union till the last minute. These should have started immediately after the initial M O U was signed and you were all aware of the more detailed reports. That broke down the infection rate by town. This oversight on your part needs to be addressed. Once the contract is finally negotiated. There needs to be some sort of official communication from this committee that outlines the factors that will go into moving back into a full remote situation.
The COVID handle.
And what are the factors that allow the return to hybrid and in-school model we were under before? I know that some people are very proud of the participation and cooperation that has been formed in preparation for the school year. Between the school committee and teachers and administrators. This committee and the district need to reflect on their transparency when it comes to communicating with parents of these communities. Up to this point, this committee has failed to do that and our trust in your ability has been severely impacted. Thank you. And let me just all check. That concludes the first public comment.
Okay, so we're moving on to student advisory report and tonight we have two new students joining. And I would kindly ask that one at a time that you introduce yourselves to the committee. And then give a brief advisory report on what's going on in the regional school.
Hi, I'm Annette St. Jox. I'm a junior. I'm one of the two student advisory report persons. Timmy Garrish was another one. He was the other chosen one, but he actually had worked tonight, so he couldn't make it. Um, I've lived in Southwick my whole life. I'm in about five different clubs. I'm a student athlete. The report would just be a lot of the students are just concerned about winter sports. What's the situation with that? And just ultimately, everybody wants to get back in the classroom if they're if they chose the hybrid plan.
Thank you for your introduction and your report. Okay, moving on to educational presentations. We do not have any this evening. Policies. We have three first readings tonight. First up is public participation at school committee meetings. Any questions, comments? I believe this was set back for a little rework if I'm not mistaken. If somebody wants to speak on behalf of the policy subcommittee.
We did end up, yeah, so we've been working on this policy for a really, I think, a long time at this point. Um, we went back most recently and I think if you find it online or bullet. Uh, shoot, where is it? No, well, it's number one. We kind of outlined the scope of the school committee. And our authority here highlighting that under the school committee's can primary concerns are the power to select and terminate the superintendent. I just almost said president, oops. The ability to review and approve budgets for public education in the district. The ability to establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. So we wanted that to be. Clear because I know that a lot of people are wondering what actually applies and what is. Helpful to comment on and receive feedback on. Let's see, what else did we add? A lot of this is the same. I'm wondering if anyone remembers. Your requests from our.
Chelsea, the third paragraph. One of the school committee members asked us to outline the intent behind public comment.
Oh, right. And this has come up a lot. Um, public comment, although it it feels like a really good time because especially when we're back in in person. People would come for public comment and then we kind of just have to stare back at them and it just feels terrible. But it's because public comment is not a discussion. It's a place for you to just openly. Express your concern, your opinion on issues within within this scope. But it isn't a discussion, a debate, or a dialogue between the commenter and the school committee.
And I think that's just the most important point. So I thank you for putting that in there and you know, I mean, I know I've been on the other side. I've been a public commenter and been frustrated with the fact that I have questions and those questions can't be answered in this venue. And I get that, but it's not that we're not listening. I mean, the point is to give an avenue for the public to express their thoughts. And us to listen. Um, and just because it's not a back and forth, it's not an answering of questions, it's not a debate or a dialogue, doesn't mean that we're not listening. Um, but it is an opportunity and to people that are out there and listening and wishing to make a statement. You know, my best advice and suggestion, being one of those people years ago, is prepare a written statement and and come and read it because we do listen.
Yeah, those statements are really important and the sentence leading into that third paragraph says. The committee would like the opportunity to hear the wishes and ideas of the public. There are moments that make you raise your eyebrow a little bit, that make you go and ask a few more questions outside of the meeting. Or potentially in the meeting. So they are helpful even if there is no dialogue or debate right at that point. So that's the thought. Um, and the stuff that was already in there was that improper conduct and remarks are not allowed. The chairperson is the remarks are addressed through the chairperson. Public comment segment shall not exceed fifteen minutes. That's just a general guideline. I know that we've had moments. Where we needed much longer than fifteen minutes and the chairperson can make that allowance, but to keep the meeting moving. Or fluidly, that's kind of a goal. Any other parts? I think that's about it.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions on this first reading? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. I K F graduation requirements. Subcommittee would like to make some comments.
I think that we have Joe Terrell on backup here, I think, because we went through and. Realigned the credits. We also paid a lot of attention to the alternative physical education course. Section right under the total credits to graduate. Which was important because there's a lot of time. I think there's a lot of times when scheduling. Students need a little flexibility so that they can take the caliber of courses that they would like to take or the variety of courses. Um, and so by adding this into our graduation requirements, we. The goal is to make sure that we can get those academic things onto the students' schedules. But still fulfill that his ed requirement.
Any questions on this first reading? Okay, moving on to the last one. This is policy G C G for substitute teachers.
I think there's a part I'm going to forget about this, but a big. Piece of our work was removing in the old policy, there was the term short-term sub. Um, as well as long-term sub, as well as daily substitute, and there really was no such thing as a short-term sub. I'm going to zoom into mine because it's a little closer. Important things to notice are that for our long-term sub. That is for anyone who is anticipating to be absent or to fill an absence for twenty, more than twenty consecutive school days. That written in here, they are allowed to be sick or have an emergency absence and that won't break their service, which is important when considering their. Their rate of pay. For the first twenty days, it will be at the daily substitute rate. After that, it kicks into sixty percent of the current B one rate, whatever rate that is at the time. So this will grow with us. This policy will grow. And then on the ninety-first day, it won't be sixty percent. It will be the current B one rate for the for that substitute teacher.
Can I just ask a really dumb question? When we refer to B one, are we talking about a step in a column level?
Yes, it would be a bachelor step one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on this policy? Okay, these were first readings, so we'll have two more opportunities to make any questions or changes to these. Move on to action items.
Move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District. And the Southwick Town and Granville Education Association, which modifies teacher evaluations for the twenty 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 one academic year recommended.
So moved. A second.
Any questions on this M O A?
So should we be clear about what portions of the M O A we are approving and what portions we need to wait on and until?
I think they're separate documents, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, last call for any questions on the M O A with the S E A for teacher evaluation. Okay, we will do a roll call vote to this motion. Pam, you're up first.
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff is a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero.
Okay, we will post that on our website tomorrow under the human resources and contracts. So I know that was kind of quick for people to see. I know some people were curious about that. Uh, move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District and the Southwick Town and Granville Education Association, which. Wrong one, sorry. Move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District. And the Southwick Town and Granville Education Association, which identifies intramural coach stipends, A P Spanish compensation and five oh four coordinator salaries. The twenty 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 one academic year recommended.
So moved. A second.
Questions on this? Okay, I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Pam, you're up first.
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jeff is a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve home education proposals, H S twenty twenty one dash seventy seven to H S twenty twenty one dash eighty two recommended.
So moved. Second.
Questions on the home ed proposals?
So I realized that these were proposals were received in November, but my question is, have they been homeschooled since the beginning of the year?
Um, I can't tell you off the top of my head right now. I know that we just received two. That I know for sure were students who were enrolled and are now going to be homeschooled for the remainder of the school year.
Okay, thank you.
I can find out for you though, Pam.
I was just curious if, you know, there is movement among, I mean, we know that there's some permitted movement among. You know, whether families choose to be fully remote or hybrid. Um, and I was also wondering if there is movement among being in district versus, you know, fully homeschooled.
I will send you out correspondence tomorrow to let you know the answer to that. I know two of them most recently because I was reviewing them and they were enrolled in our school.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria? Maria?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yes.
And then Jeff is a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the twenty twenty one school year fundraisers, Southwick Regional School G S A T-shirt sales and the Paws P T O giving tree recommended.
So moved. Second.
Any questions on the fundraisers? Okay, seeing no questions, roll call vote. We'll start with Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve an unpaid leave of absence for unit A member Megan Kelly Bag for the period of November twenty third, two thousand twenty through August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one recommended.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? This action. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero.
Move to approve the agreement between the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School Committee and Jennifer Colbreth, literacy instructional coach for the period November second, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty one recommended.
So moved. Second.
Any questions on this contract? Just double checking. This includes the new language on determination, not based on the budget anymore.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Hmm, one sec. Hold on. Let me look at something.
Did I? Does literacy coach be responsible for?
Oh, there it is. Okay.
I'm sorry, Ryan, what was your question?
It was Pam. Um, what grade levels would this literacy coach be responsible for?
She's technically K through twelve right now because we do not have a coach at the seven through twelve level. But she is more focused on the elementary school because we have the new reading program and we really need her to help support the teachers with the new literacy program. But she is here for pedagogical support at the regional school.
Okay, thank you.
Chelsea, did you have a question or are you good?
No, I'm good. I was checking something and I didn't want you to rush by. All right, I'm good.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote to accept this contract. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yep.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Motion passes seven zero zero. Okay, moving on to reports. Up first is Superintendent Willard.
Hey, well, I first just would like to take just a moment to apologize to the community. That I failed to. Give enough information around the closing metrics that we were using to go into a remote status. Just a little bit of background information. So at over the summer, as you know, we were really proud because and I still am proud that we were one of the first school districts. To open its doors for in-person learning and we also had the greatest number of in-person learning. In order to do that, we had to work cooperatively and to come up with a memorandum of understanding, which is. A change of working conditions for our teachers' union. And our teachers' union was super supportive. They wanted to come back and they wanted to be with the kids as well. So we were meeting in early July and we had worked around the clock to meet health measures, safety measures, six-foot measures, H vac measures. We had a look at metrics to make sure, as I told everybody, the safety and the and the health of all students and staff. So with that being said, we worked together and we came up with the M O A that was executed on September second. While we were negotiating, we were working and getting information from public health nurse, our board of health. Um, and the metric that was readily available at the time and the one that we were using was the Hamden County metrics. It was used to measure the rates of COVID. And as we were monitoring it and looking at it, we were seeing the trends going down over the course of the summer. And it was the only metrics that we had. And when the state came out with a new metrics on August twelfth. We had already solidified what we had agreed to. And the way negotiations work is when you have a signed agreement and you're ready to go forward. We were looking at the data that we had agreed to. We just felt it wasn't prudent to move to a metric that was brand new. One that we weren't really sure of, one that we hadn't worked with. And so we kept our eyes on the Hamden County method. And we watched it as schools started and we thought we noticed that it was starting to increase as the school year went on. Uh, what we didn't anticipate when looking at it is we were looking for trends and patterns. And although we did notice that it was going up. It was going up at a pretty incremental rate. And to be honest, we were really hoping we were going to make it to thanks. And to be honest, we were really hoping we were going to make it to Thanksgiving when we saw the 2.15 and then the 2.27. Uh, when it jumped to the 2.99, um, I, again, I apologize. I should have told everybody the metrics earlier and made it much more abundantly clear what we were using as our metrics. So when we saw the 2.99, I did share that Monday that I was anticipating the metric to go above 3% the following week. Um, as you can see, it did. It went to a 3.74 and this past week it was at a 4.46. So we are working together, uh, very closely with our, uh, teachers' union and our paraprofessional union to come up with a new memorandum of understanding um, that one keeps the safety and the health of all of our students and staff at the forefront uh, and also uses more current metrics that we have available to us now. I can't share anything more than that because it is an ongoing negotiation, but I just want to assure, uh, the parents out there that we are eager to get back to school. We are eager to have our students back in school. We know that there is absolutely no replication for what our teachers do with our students, uh, on a daily basis, it with in-person learning. And, um, we all know what is right for our kids, especially our early learners and our vulnerable learners. Uh, so we are working on it. As soon as I have anything to share, I will share it with you. But I also want to let you know that, uh, last week we did have a very significant uptick in, uh, COVID in our schools. Uh, just last week, uh, we had only one case still at Woodland School. And when the nurses did their reporting as of 11/11, uh, there were three, uh, three positive cases at Powder Mill School. I can tell you that we have received three more since then and that will be updated on tomorrow's reporting. Uh, the regional school, as of last Wednesday, uh, still only have one, uh, positive case. But since last Wednesday, we've, uh, had about seven, I think, seven students, uh, test positively. And we still have one person who is not assigned to a building. So, uh, we did see a significant spike in COVID and I just want to remind people that in order for us to open our doors, we just need to make sure that we're doing everything we can in our community to keep those COVID rates down. I know you've heard it a hundred times and I'm probably the last person you want to hear it from. Wash your hands, uh, keep your social contacts small, uh, social distance, wear masks. Um, and as soon as these numbers can go down and it stays to so, uh, we will have those doors open so we can have our students access in-person learning, which I know is a priority of yours and definitely a priority of mine in the future. So I want to share that.
Anything else Superintendent Willard?
That is all I have right now. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week.
Uh, Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Amy, if you could just bring up the, um, FY21 preliminary cherry sheet. Or sheet, yeah, thank you. Um, so, as I've mentioned at, uh, previous meetings, the Commonwealth has been very slow to adopt a state budget. They still do not have a state, uh, budget in place. Uh, the state budget, um, uh, determines, uh, chapter 78 for school districts, uh, required local contributions for, um, municipal and regional school districts, other things such as, uh, regional school transportation reimbursement, uh, the amount of money that districts can expect for, um, school, school choice, um, revenue and what charges will be made against, um, districts for school choice programs and, and some other, um, some other sources of revenue as well. So while that is still being worked out, they, they have been making progress. Um, you may recall the governor, uh, about a month or so ago had released, uh, revised budget proposal. Just a point of reminder, our budget was based upon the governor's initial budget proposal, which was released back in January. And in the absence of any other updated information, those were the figures that were used when the three towns considered, uh, the, uh, the district's proposed, uh, operating budget for the current fiscal year. So the governor, uh, did modify his numbers. Since then, the House Ways and Means Committee has released their proposal for the FY21 state budget. And just, uh, days later, the Senate Ways and Means Committee re- released their version. The Senate Ways and Means and House Ways and Means Committees, uh, versions are in some cases nearly identical to the governor's revised budget proposal. However, the, uh, sharp contrast is in the area of regional school transportation where our projected, um, revenue from that source is down, uh, $258,000 from where the, um, where the governor had it and what our, what our budget is, uh, based upon. So, uh, in, in order to be completely cooperative and transparent with our member towns, if you recall the school committee, um, back when our budgets were being, uh, voted on by the committee and then considered by the three towns at, uh, the annual town meetings that occurred in June, um, the district through, through the committee and the superintendent made commitments to the towns that, uh, in the event that, uh, state funding and required local contributions changed in any material way, significant reductions, um, or potential increases, um, that the s- school committee would, uh, would reevaluate or look at our FY21 uh, budget and communicate with the towns what, what options might exist. So if we incorporate the updated figures from the, um, House Ways and Means and Senate Ways and Means budget proposal, um, along with the required, um, along with the required local aid, I'm sorry, the, the required local contribution that the legislature adopted, uh, a couple of months ago, um, into the, into our assessment formula without making any modifications to total spending, the, the total approved expenditure budget, uh, that would result in increased assessments to all three towns. Um, there is no need for the district to do anything right now, but we do want to, um, demonstrate to the towns what the impact would be of, uh, incorporating these new revenue estimates that are, that appear like they're going to be coming forward, um, and approved by the state and in the not-too-distant future. We do have our budget roundtable for really planning for FY22, um, this Thursday, but we will spend some time working with the towns to kind of give them a sense as to what this would mean to the assessments, um, and then follow up and make, make some determinations about whether, uh, staying with the status quo and what we have for a, a budget is in the best interest of everybody, or if there's an appetite for this, uh, towns to request at the school committee, submit or adopt a revised budget. So, uh, a number of discussions need to take place and we'll be providing some data to the towns so that they, they fully understand what the options are. But we're a little disappointed with where that regional, uh, transportation, uh, reimbursement came in. Any questions about that or about the process?
So Steve, I'm, am I correct that this information is information that you're going to be bringing to the budget roundtable meeting on Thursday of this week?
Yes.
Okay, so let me see if I can, this, this is not my area of expertise. You guys know, I'm good with, I'm good with the education part and also good with the money part. But let me see if I got that. So basically what we're saying here is the question is whether to make adjustments to our current, um, appropriations or what, or just simply a, a change in what's going to happen in the future.
It, it would be to consider modifications or, uh, adjustments to the current operating budget. So reducing total spending, um, to make up for what would otherwise be increased assessments to, to the three towns. Um, so if we were to, if we were to adopt these revenue numbers and say, all right, we want to do a new, uh, a new budget and utilize these, um, these updated revenue figures from the state. And if you did not change the total authorized spending, the result of this would be, um, increased assessments to the three towns. Well, increased assessments to two of the three towns.
For this year?
For the current fiscal year, yes.
So the question is basically, do you want us to make cuts in our budget so that we don't have to do that? Am I summarizing that correctly?
Correct. The way around it would be if we were to incorporate these updated revenue figures, um, and, and, uh, try to assure the towns that they would, uh, that would not see an increase, we would have to make, um, reductions to the total op- operating budget.
And do you know where those reductions would come from?
We sort of have some savings, uh, banked at this point anyways in, in anticipation of a potential, uh, shortfall in revenue from these sources. So that's why in the final analysis, it may be our recommendation to the towns that, that we not do anything, that we can, we can get by with, um, things as they are and the towns would not see an increase nor would they see a, a decrease. Basically, it would remain status quo.
How about for next year?
So, next year is, um, is a total unknown at this point. So much depends on whether or not there's federal stimulus money for, for the states, which seems to be in limbo right now with a new, um, executive administration at the federal level. Um, it's possible there might be more movement, but you still have at this point a, uh, Republican-controlled senate and there, there may, there may not be able to reach agreement on an aid package to, to the states. So that's really what this delay in the adoption of a state budget has been about. Uh, as I understand it is, is the lack of, or the delays with, uh, definitive answers on uh, federal assistance to the states, which would, um, which would help them out. So, but they're sort of running out of time and I think they've, they've, they're putting forth a budget right now that assumes that they're not going to have the, um, the federal assistance that they were hoping for. And, and therefore some of the, um, some of the estimates are, are, uh, are slightly off.
Which means bad news for us, right?
If it's not, it's not, I, I, I'd say it could be, um, kind of a neutral effect if, if we have, um, if we can agree on a few things.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Steve, can you just make it clear that we, at, at this moment, we don't have any intention of going and, um, looking to increase our budget by that 300,000?
Correct, correct. I mean, we're, we're, we're in a good place with our, um, existing budget for FY21. So even with some reductions in, um, in actual reductions in revenue. So this is kind of a, an actual to budget scenario. The, um, we, we're okay right now, even with these reductions to revenue, we, we can we anticipate we'll be able to get through FY21 without, um, significant impact. And that's why I would be arguing or suggesting that, um, we leave things as is. But, um, it, it would, I think it would be prudent and, uh, transparent to, to show the, show the towns how this, how this might play out if, if we were to, um, adopt these other, these, these new revenue estimates that the state has put forward. And that's really what, what this is, what this is about. Cause we did make that commitment to them during, um, town, town meetings. Uh, and the meetings that were held, uh, leading up to that, or if there was going to be material changes to the, uh, revenue, uh, picture from the, from state sources that we would, we would, um, you know, bring that back to them and, and talk about options. So we, we'll start that on, uh, on Thursday evening. And work through the finance subcommittee to, uh, you know, to, to the extent that we need to, uh, put, put a proposal together to modify something.
Hey Steve, it's Maria right here. Um, can you explain the charter tuition reimbursement, please?
So for students who are, um, from our, from our three, one of the three towns or any of the three towns who are attending, um, charter schools, um, we, we get a, um, reimbursement on the tuition that is charged. You'll see there's a tuition charge that, that shows up, um, under estimated charges. So there's a charter school sending tuition. So our district has charged the tuition rate for, um, any students that are attending charter schools. Um, there is a formula that the, that the charter, uh, legislation has, which reimburses districts for that on a, on a declining, um, rate over time. So it's basically tries to soften the blow of, um, if you had a, you know, an exodus of students to charter schools, you'd be on the hook for, you know, if they didn't have that reimbursement, you'd be on the hook for the full, full cost of that. And so there's a, um, over a period of time, the percentage that you reimburse for those charter tuitions, uh, declines to, so after several years, you, you don't get anything, but in the first few years of a student attending a charter school, districts are, um, kind of, uh, provided with a little bit of assistance to, to kind of ease into the full burden of a charter, a charter school attendee. So we've, we've had a small uptick in the number of, uh, students attending, uh, charter schools just in the last few years. We've had a pretty strong tradition here of not many students attending charters at all. And we still don't have many, but, um, this is a little bit of, uh, an increase, uh, in terms of the, the estimated charge uh, versus what we've seen in the past. And that's why you see the tuition reimbursement going up as well. Does that answer your question, Maria?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Do you have any more topics?
Uh, no, that's it for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to some committees and liaisons. Uh, negotiations, I know you folks, I think you had a date set for upcoming work. Am I correct?
We had our, uh, negotiations with, um, our paraprofessional, uh, unit last Thursday, I believe, last Thursday night. And we have three, two or three dates set up to follow that.
For just December, right?
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully that one, it seems like that's going to be fairly smooth and quick.
Hopefully that one, it seems like that's going to be fairly smooth and quick.
Finance Subcommittee, we met, I can keep my date straight. It was last week. Jonathan and I zoomed with Steve and Jen. I think the highlights that we discussed, we reviewed some of the upcoming changes to some of the healthcare costs of certain groups, which basically netted out to zero between some increases in one category and decreases in another. Steve also talked to us about concerns about the enrollment numbers, the impact to next year's fiscal budget, which I'm sure is going to be a topic of discussion Thursday night. He also went through the current health of the current fiscal year. And Jonathan, did I miss anything?
Not that I can think of. That meeting feels like it was a hundred years ago, to be honest with you. The way things are going.
OPV EC, Pam, do you have an update?
No, we meet tomorrow.
Correct, I was just going to mention that. We do have a joint meeting tomorrow.
Yes, so have you attended these joint meetings before?
Not on Zoom.
I was just going to ask if you had a sense of how long they go. I know we start at six thirty.
They're usually an hour, two and a half.
Okay.
The Policy Subcommittee?
We met. Uh-oh, when was it? Oh gosh, we just met and so we'll have to schedule a date to meet again. But we, you saw our policies, so to be determined for our next meeting.
Buildings and Grounds, I did have an opportunity to meet, actually zoomed with the Buildings and Grounds Supervisor and Eric Wykander and Steve Presnell. And Eric highlighted a couple of things that he's working on. First of all, he's ready for the snow, for the upcoming snow season. He's finalizing his contract with a local supplier that takes care of piling. He's been staying on top of the ever-changing requirements on HVAC and working through some programming issues. And I asked him a question about our server room, because if you folks remember, we've had some issues with HVAC in the server room at the regional school and the new unit that was installed has worked flawlessly, knock on wood. We have not had any more issues since that, that, that upgrade. And lastly, he is taking a look at the, the janitorial or the custodial handbook. It was a high level on that meeting. ILT, has there been any ILT meetings this year yet?
Funny, you should mention it. We actually just met today right before this meeting. So I can do a little bit, I know Ryan was there as well, so my internet cut out in, through a little bit of it, but I can give you the general breakdown. It was the first meeting. There were introductions. And then the principles for both powder mill and woodland summarized the results of the parent survey that went out to parents after, you know, kind of the first quarter. And they kind of highlighted the, the, the responses received. The regional school principal was not there, so we did not hear that from the regional school. But in general, the feedback was quite positive in terms of areas for growth or improvement. Much of it was around technology as to be expected, because obviously our technology demands are high and our resources somewhat limited. But then the conversation focused around engagement, student engagement and what that looks like for both teachers and students in both the remote and hybrid setting. So we went back to kind of the original rubric that we put into place for a normal scenario with regard to what engagement looks like. And then the participants, it was via Zoom, so we went to different breakout rooms by school. And we evaluated those rubrics and then kind of tweaked them a little bit for what the current scenario is. Then kind of rejoined and the conversation when I left was based, was about how do we take this information in ILT and make it trickle down to the teachers in all of our schools? I don't know, Ryan, if you want to add anything that I might have missed or, or Jen or anybody else that might have been at that meeting.
No, I, some of the other comments of improvement were the food as well. People had a I don't know, didn't really like the food options that they've been serving, I guess, at the schools. And then, yeah, technology, but a lot of, even the students who commented had a lot of positive feedbacks, saying that they were happy to be back in the school. And I left soon after you did, because I had to get ready for this meeting.
Any questions on ILT? Okay, just to report out, I did participate in MASC's seventy-fifth annual meeting. It's held on Saturday, the seventh. We did vote in a new president. Her name is Andrea Wadsworth and she is from Western Massachusetts. We then spent the rest of the afternoon working through ten different resolutions, ranging from state funding for COVID, anti-racism, high-stakes testing. And all the information is shown on the MASC website if you're interested. Anybody have any other subcommittee or liaison report outs? Okay, moving on to our second public comment. Maybe if you'd be so kind to check the superintendent's email account?
I've checked the account and there are no public comment emails for the second portion.
New discussion.
Have we, this is John, have we heard anything? I, I, I know it was brought up earlier about the subcommittee for sports and it's really, obviously is kind of a, you know, an item that is somewhat of a least of the concerns right now. But have we gotten any guidance from MIAA about sports? Because I know that was the follow-up, I believe. We were supposed to have something by now, right?
Yes, I was at a superintendent's meeting this morning, Jonathan, and one of the superintendents is on the MIAA board and he said he is expecting them to release the guidance on Friday.
Okay.
Pam, did you have a comment?
Yeah, it was. She kind of trailed off. We lost her.
Sorry, can you hear me now? Okay, so my question was, based on the last meeting, the decision was to hold off on the creation of a subcommittee with regard to school sports or, or, or winter sports until that guidance was released. Am I correct on that?
That was, that was my understanding or what we, what we agreed on. There wasn't much sense in forming something until we have an idea of what they're even going to prescribe, I think.
I have spoken with the AD and I've asked him to solicit input from community members and stakeholders as he prepares his report for the school committee.
The season is already, is already pushed back anyway, right? Just to reiterate that from the last meeting? Does it, is it not until the beginning of next year? Is that right?
That was the last I had heard and I know that it's not starting in January. I mean, not starting in December, excuse me.
No, I guess that's it. I just stopped checking something here.
He'll be preparing a presentation for the school board for a meeting likely in December. Correct, Jen?
Yes, I asked him to prepare something with input from different stakeholders. I would like him to speak with parents, with students, with our Board of Health, with our public health nurse. And to have a presentation, I'd like to see it beforehand with Principal Tremel in case I have any questions or can offer him some feedback before it comes to the school committee. But that is where we are right now. I just know that, that I, again, will express I do have serious concerns as there is a huge uptick and a spike right now in COVID and winter sports are inside. So it is not my choice, but I do make a recommendation and I do err on the side of health and safety of all. Willing to hear his reports and the facts that he has found out. And I'd like him to work with local ADs and see how the fall sports impacted the contact tracing. Did students miss school due to contact tracing? Was there any spread on any teams? I'd like to have data about what was going on in our surrounding communities in the fall.
Okay, any more input on potentially creating a sports subcommittee? Okay, moving on to new business. No new business this evening? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
The roll call, Walt, Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Have a good evening, folks.